Good evening. It's Tuesday, August 1st. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. We have to amend the agenda. We have a motion to add item eight, new business G, consideration of a contract with SRM Hospitality LLC to operate the First Street Beach concession stand, allowing action by council on this additional item. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items.
Good evening. My name is Tom Quinn, 310 Oak Street here in Manistee. My reason for appearing before you tonight is to voice my very strong support for an item on the agenda, item E, under new business, which is consideration of awarding the contract to upgrade the traffic signals at First and Maple Street. I'm a person who walks as opposed to drives most places in Manistee, still a very walkable town. That intersection is just plain dangerous. It's frightening to cross that street. And so I welcome the enhancements. Mr. Bachman and I go back a long time on trying to improve the safety features of that intersection. So I applaud your efforts in spending the money. I have no idea whether the amount at stake is reasonable or not. I defer to others on that. In the interim, however, I would strongly encourage Department of Public Works to get out there and repaint the stripes on the crosswalk. They're barely visible right now. And the other day I was crossing that street with a green light, by the way, wasn't jaywalking, and somebody came through that intersection at a very fast speed. I won't tell you what he said because there may be children listening, but he informed me that I didn't belong there because there was no crosswalk. So I think painting the stripes on an interim basis would enhance safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, consideration of zoning ordinance Z 23-03, notification regarding next study session, consideration of an update made to the International Overdose Awareness Day event to be held at the Manistee City Marina on Thursday, August 31st, 2023. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business, consideration of the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Berger Chevrolet. The Manistee City Police Department maintains a fleet of police vehicles to serve city residents. Police vehicles are replaced as they reach the end of life cycle, and the purchase of a new patrol vehicle is warranted. Vehicle pricing has been secured from Berger Chevrolet through MI Deal, and three quotes were collected from upfitting companies with Tellrad being the lowest bid. At this time, council could take action to authorize the purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Berger Chevrolet for $40,726, upfitting by Tellrad for $19,95671, totaling $60,68271. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you?
We expect to take delivery there, Jack.
We don't know because of the supply issue, but we think they're holding one for us, but we couldn't commit, which is kind of the challenge of the vehicle industry now. You know, two vehicles ago, it took us 11 months to get a vehicle, and the next vehicle took two months. So there's a little bit inconsistency. We hope they're still holding one for us, but we couldn't give them written permission, consent to do that. But it might be something we look at internally about changing how we make these vehicle purchases or permissions. I know the DPW and I have conversations about how it's been a struggle to secure vehicles. So to answer your question, we don't know. We hope it's sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing amendment PLF-01 PFAS investigation former city of Manistee landfill. The shallow boring sample results from December 22 and April 2023 of the city's former landfill site on Adamcheck Road indicate that the shallow groundwater may have had a more northerly direction downgrade than was previously anticipated to continue to validate the impacts and flow direction of shallow and deeper groundwater. Fishbeck needs to amend the investigation activities in this area. The estimated cost of these additional investigatory activities is $103,551. At this time, council could take action to authorize the amendment PLF-01 PFAS investigation former city of Manistee landfill and allow the city manager, Bill Gamble, to execute the documents on behalf of the city of Manistee Brownfield Authority. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
For a second?
For?
Any discussion?
Where's the money coming from?
The refuse fund, and I guess I would say that Brownfield Authority is inaccurate. It's just on behalf of the city of Manistee. Do you think we need to motion to amend that? So it's coming from the refuse fund. We budgeted an extra $250,000 this year to cover PFAS, so.
So when this says evaluate the impacts, like is that budgeting for if there's issues with that? Like after they do their study and they find areas of concern, or are we going to have to make amendments and then come up with a plan?
So I'll answer that, and I'll invite Peter up here to talk about it. But the first step was finding out the extent of the contamination. So the first phase was doing a shallow groundwater investigation to see where we had higher levels of PFO and PFAS. With that information, we use that to educate where we put more permanent wells and then deeper wells as well. So we're at this phase, we're still trying to figure out the easterly boundary, the northerly boundary. We think we have the westerly boundary, and I'll let Peter expand on that.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so one of the obligations under part 201 is to delineate the nature and extent of impacts. So what we're doing is we phase the investigative activities out there, trying to tackle the low-hanging fruit first by performing shallow investigative work at the water table surface. And now that we've done that, we're looking to investigate a little bit deeper. So we're going to be performing vertical aquifer profile samples down to 150 feet below ground surface to get a better understanding of the deeper portions of the aquifer. And then, as Bill mentioned, setting some permanent monitoring wells in the shallow aquifer to set hard delineation boundaries that Eagle is expecting. And then we'll also survey those elevations in and obtain water levels in the new monitoring wells, which will be used to determine the groundwater flow direction. Once we get that information, there will likely be another phase of investigation to fully get the definition of the impact down. These activities that we've performed to date, the findings have been presented to Eagle and the Health Department, so we're working with state agencies to update them on the results.
Thank you.
We've been in a substantial drought. How does that affect the groundwater and the movement of that water? Does it impact that?
Sure. You know, there has been a drought, and we see natural fluctuations in the groundwater elevations throughout Michigan. Back in 2019, 2020, water levels were up a few feet across the state. But, you know, typically, we were able to determine the groundwater elevations through our drilling work and set the well screens accordingly such that there's. Thank you. Yeah, such that there's enough available well screen to accommodate for potential fluctuations in the water table height. Yeah, I think so.
Anybody else? I'll wait to take role.
I think she'll be right back.
Peter, is that a fast-flowing, the way it's going, or is it a long take to get to the next road?
Yeah, I haven't performed any groundwater flow calculations at this point. Right now, we've been focused on characterizing the contaminant concentrations, determining the spatial event, and we haven't performed any hydraulic analysis to come up with hydraulic conductivity measurements, which would be used for calculation of groundwater flow velocities.
Is it mostly going north, or is it going off to the west as it shows here?
Yeah, we know it's going kind of to the north, potentially to the northwest. There's still some uncertainty, and by installing the monitoring wells, we'll be able to determine that direction more accurately.
Gotcha. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing a revocable license with MI Beach Properties LLC to create additional access to the south side of 369 River Street. The city has received a request from the owners of 69 River Street to allow the removal of a portion of a guardrail and add potential pedestrian enhancements on the city-owned property west of the parking lot to create bridge access from the south side of the building. A revocable license was determined to be appropriate approval to allow this activity. At this time, council could take action to grant a revocable license to MI Beach Properties LLC to create additional access to the south side of their property located at 369 River Street and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Can you explain this just a little bit?
Sure. And I know Brandon, you're here as well. I'll kick it off if they have any more questions. But going up one, so this kind of gives you the, this is a city-owned parcel off the, it's a parking lot just behind this building, and he wants to build, what's on the second page, is basically an access to those two white areas to be doors by taking out a bit of that guardrail. He'd also like to perhaps do some pedestrian improvements, a sidewalk through there. So talking with the city attorney, he thought a revocable license would be the best way to go. How he cuts into the guardrail, we're going to have Jeff and Sean look into how he's proposing to cap on the ends, but this would give him the ability to do that.
What would revocable entail? I mean, why would we revoke it? What would have to happen for that to happen?
It gives us an option to say you can't do it anymore. There's an ample notice. I don't think there'd be a reason for us to do that, but it gives us that ability.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of authorizing a revocable license with the KSE Ventures LLC to create an ADA catwalk in Division Street right-of-way at 308 River Street. The city has received a request from the owner of 308 River Street to allow the addition of the ADA access of the west side of the building to connect to the south side of the building on River Street to the north side of the building. The request was reviewed by the city attorney, fire department, and DPW. A revocable license was determined to be the appropriate approval to allow this activity. At this time, council could take action to grant a revocable license to KSE Ventures LLC to create an ADA access in Division Street right-of-way at 308 River Street and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
What building is this next to?
I always, I call it the Kodak Building. So it's on, but there's another name for it. It's on Division Street, and so it's this building, the Hockins, I'm sorry. And so they want to put a catwalk basically off of the River Street level, wrapping around the building, cantilevered, so that it would be an ADA walking path to the rear entrance. There's a couple different apartments that they're planning on putting back there, so it would just allow them to have access from River Street. All right.
Making the apartments?
I believe. Yeah, please.
Thank you very much. My partner, you don't mind if I pull my partner by a little bit more. Basically, what we're planning to do is put in another commercial space back there as we do in the front, and that ADA ramp just lets us get to the back and access that area.
Okay.
How, may I ask a question on that? Like, so when you put the ramp in, how will that impact that drive there? Because there is quite a bit of activity because you ran out those docks back there, right? So how do you anticipate that?
Yeah, we basically met with, or my partner met with historical mission and met with Public Works. We did get some drawings of that to confirm that there is enough space to access. So it is maybe a little bit tight in there, but there's still space. Our captains are aware. And at the end of the day, if more of them need to park in the street, then they're welcome to.
Yeah, okay.
I could speak to that, too. What we did is we asked the building owners to provide cross-sections. We have utilities. We have storm sewer that goes down there, and they provided cross-sections. And when we reviewed those, we're very confident that all of our equipment could access and excavate that pipe and replace it if necessary. The fire department also looked at it for apparatus access, so they can get a fire truck down there if necessary. It's actually a pretty wide open space, and the catwalk would be hung right along the building and pretty much where you see the color change, and it would be, you know, level across that. So we feel good about it.
Oh, perfect. Thanks. Anybody else? Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract to upgrade the traffic signal at First and Maple Street. The City Transportation Improvement Plan includes upgrading the traffic signals at First and Maple Street. City council also requested adding pedestrian crossing signals. The project was publicly bid twice, the second bid resulting in two bids being received. Value engineering was completed with the low bid resulting in a recommended contract award of $179,55368. At this time, council could take action to approve the contract with Jay Rannick Electric, Inc. in the amount of $179,5368, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a few questions. This is, didn't we budget $150,000 for this intersection?
We had previously budgeted, I believe, $60,000 to do, just to upgrade the signals, and that was in the previous budget. And then we budgeted additional money in the current budget to add the pedestrian signals to it. But I think the original two budgets combined were $150,000.
That's what I think, too. If this passes tonight, when would they start work? Because we still have that whole D4 problem. We're not going to be finished with Memorial Bridge until sometime in 2024.
Right, so the plan would be to do it in the later half of September and be complete in early October. The.
This year?
Yes. And it would happen after US 31 reopened to traffic. Just as a side note, I attended their progress meeting this morning, and they have found a lot of additional work that needed to be done on the 31 Bridge, but they've been working seven days a week, 12- to 14-hour days, and have caught back up and are currently on schedule. And if I remember, the 70 days ended September 17th, 16th, right in there. So this work would occur after that.
And when this work does occur, what will happen to that intersection? Will it be closed? Is it going to be one-way, or how is it going to work?
It won't be closed. There will be work that is completed in each quadrant. So it may be, there will be some impact to pedestrians, but it'll still allow traffic to pass through there.
And where are we getting the extra money from?
As I put in my memo, we have, the last two of our street projects were closed out under budget. I think Quincy was almost $100,000, and Memorial Drive, I don't remember. Do you remember what Memorial Drive was? It was close to $100,000, so we're proposing to use some of the savings from the previous projects to add to this one.
I just feel this, I agree that there needs to be some upgrades at that intersection without a doubt. But this is the whole package, so I'm just wondering if that's the best use of our money, I guess, in my mind. I want to make it safe, but on the other hand, what we're seeing now is a lot of congestion due to a detour, and most of the time, there hasn't been any accidents. I mean, police chief reported on that, so.
Well, there was an accident last fall, wasn't there?
This fall?
Yeah, and if you sit there and watch the kids try to cross, they can't cross that street. They sit there.
Yeah, the project was, we were moving forward, replacing the signals. We're having trouble with the controls. We're having trouble with lights burning out. We have shields that we can't replace on it, so we were moving forward with that. But in the, when the city manager requested council's budget priorities prior to this current budget, this was listed as one of the priorities for the entire council, and so we budgeted appropriately and moved forward.
I'm just asking these questions because I've gotten a million questions about this. So would an alternative to this be no turn on red where the library is? Library, so if you were going from east to west and you wanted to make a left, no turn on red, and then no turn on red at the corner of the rampsdale when you're going north on Maple Street?
Yeah, I would defer that to a traffic engineer for that question.
That's just a question that has come up a few times that I keep rolling around and maybe I should ask, just to say that at least for sure that I've asked it and that we've looked at that as an alternative. So that's why I'm asking.
So I have a couple of questions, too. In your letter, Spicer letter, it said that the construction date was spring of 2024. Does the company know that you moved up the date?
So they had two alternates for the construction, and they told us directly they prefer to build it this fall.
Okay, because I know that scheduling is kind of, with construction, is kind of tricky, so.
When we bid it the first time, we only had one bidder. It was obviously higher than what we expected.
Right.
When we went through the bid, talked to the bidder, they were pretty confident that their number was the number, but we decided to put it back out for bid, and then we added a spring option in order to try to entice another group of bidders, you know, others that may have been booked for this fall. What we found is we picked up one more bidder. They were actually higher than the original. The first bidder lowered their price down a little bit, and like Sean stated, they prefer to complete the project this fall. We've done some value engineering to pull some things out. There's some other items like pulling concrete and patching concrete that are very expensive when there's such a small amount for a company coming out of town. I'm not willing to commit that, that at the time they do it, I have the staff and capabilities of doing it. But if we get like the playground installed and we're complete with that, and I've got compost turned and some of the other things, and I've got the opportunity, we still have the chance of change ordering out some of those items where I could do them in-house, but I'm not willing to commit until that schedule is fixed.
Well, that was another concern. I saw that you could put gravel down, but how long will that gravel be there without it being paved? Because that's going to.
Yeah, well, our intention is to pave it back when we do our annual patching that we typically do in the fall. So we'll be soliciting for pricing here probably later this month, and then usually those patches get paved in October.
And we're thinking like a couple of weeks at max, right?
Right, and it's just tight to the intersection. It won't be out, or tight to the curb radiuses. It won't be out into the intersection itself. And if we need to, we'll put hot patch or cold patch in there as a temporary.
Is that southwest corner going to cause any problems, Jeff, when they try to start putting those lights in? I don't know what the whole situation is there. You know, if they put the lights in, are they going to have to move that, oh, that bushes back, or are they going to do that?
Well, we certainly have to do it within the right-of-way, so the backside of the sidewalk is approximately the right-of-way line, so all of our improvements have to be inside of that.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Oh, man, that's a tough one. But since we have the extra money, I guess I'll go say yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a temporary activity permit to Echo His Love to allow for the sheltering of a homeless population in the city of Manistee at one location throughout the winter. Echo His Love is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for the sheltering of the Manistee homeless in one location throughout the winter. This would allow for the city of Manistee homeless to be sheltered for five months from November 4th, 2023, until March 30th, 2024. At Echo His Love, the main campus addressed is 525 Michael Street in Manistee, Michigan. Temporary activity permits are allowed via the zoning ordinance section 522 and section 507. At this time, council could take action to approve the temporary activity permit requested by Echo His Love to allow for the sheltering of the homeless population in the city of Manistee at one location throughout the winter. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you?
I don't have any problems. We deny it, so.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a contract with SRM Hospitality LLC to operate the First Street Beach concession stand. The city issued a request for proposals to operate the Beach House concession stand porch point in Rentals LLC. Was awarded the contract at the June 20th, 23 regular council meeting. The city has received their written request to cancel the agreement, and they have vacated the building. The subcommittee of the Parks Commission was recommended moving on to the other bidder, SRM Hospitality LLC. Due to it being late in the season, city staff are recommending that the rent to be paid by SMR Hospitality LLC for the 2023 season be waived for the rent for the remaining seasons of the three-year contract will be billed as outlined in the agreement. At this time, council could take action to enter into a contract with SRM Hospitality LLC to operate the First Street Beach concession stand, waiving rent for the 2023 season and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a report from Mr. Barry Lind on the Manistee Blackheart Airport.
I'm sorry?
A farrow is back.
It does, yes.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to update you on activity out at the airport. It's, so it's, I'm focusing mostly on calendar year last year because a lot of the numbers I have are calendar year-based, given that we're August, so it's halfway through the next year. On my last slide, I'll talk a little bit about kind of current year and forward-looking stuff. But kind of the focal focus of the airport traditionally is on our commercial air service. I mean, we're blessed as a community our size to have commercial air service. It's something that only exists for us because of policies at the federal level that subsidize that service in our community, and that exists because we've had service now continuously. And that exists because we've had service now continuously since 1962. So now 61 years of service at our airport. Our current airline is Cape Air and they've been providing service now two and a half years. Almost three years come October 1st. For the last year, they did 10,153 passengers and that was up 2% from the year before. And that is our second best year ever in the 61 years of commercial air service. And I've kind of got a top five list there of our top five years. For those that can remember the nine months that we had frontier service here, that is by far our top year. Now Cape Air is two and four on that list. Given where how things are going this year, I expect they'll occupy three of those top five spots come the end of the year. For Cape Air, it was both a good and a bad year. The Cape Air service is doing well in the sense that it is meeting the needs of the community. And that is why those numbers are where they are. And particularly their code share agreement with American Airlines. So you can book an American Airlines coded flight out of Manistee to anywhere American flies. That's what code share means. So it's actually an American Airlines ticket out of Manistee. But Cape Air also provides interline agreements with United Airlines. So that means you can buy a single ticket, but one segment is flown by Cape Air and the other segments are flown by United or their partners. It's, pricing works a little differently in the two scenarios. But given we're flying, Cape Air is flying into Chicago O'Hare. Those are the two dominant carriers down there. So pretty much from Manistee, you can get access practically anywhere in the world, which is what you need to be successful along with decent pricing and reliability, et cetera, et cetera. So that's providing us those seamless connection opportunities. Booking on basically all platforms. So you can book directly on American's website. You can book directly on United's website, book on any third-party website. It's, you're able to purchase tickets and compare pricing on any platform you choose. But Cape Air did have some struggles last year. Some of you may have heard that there's a national, well, actually it's really worldwide pilot shortage. And that particularly hurt Cape Air at a couple of different periods last year. In June, they struggled a year ago. And then later in the year, November, December, they struggled with not having enough pilots to operate their schedules. And that is, that is true industry-wide. The level of problem depends on kind of where in the hierarchy you are. So the larger the airline, offering higher wages, they're less impacted. As you go down, smaller airlines with lower wage scales and less ability to provide as attractive of a pilot job are struggling more. But Cape Air has created some very interesting agreements with other carriers to basically utilize their system as a training ground. So they are actually now, knock on wood, past those issues and actually have a good supply of pilots coming in as well as retaining the ones they have to the extent they can. And then they also struggled with their new aircraft type. So when they started service with Manistee at roughly that same time, they introduced a new aircraft type into their system. They had been flying Cessna 402s for the last 30 years and those are aging airplanes. So they were at a long-term strategic plan to switch that to the Technum model. We were one of the first airports to get that. But sometimes with something brand new, it has teething pains. Both the aircraft has had some issues as well as the company now being used to only having one airplane type. So parts, maintenance, everything geared towards one thing. Now suddenly you've got two. That's caused some, some issues. As of, actually technically as of today, Manistee now is going to be a one aircraft type site, Technum only. We've been operating both airplanes in our airport for most of the period of time Cape Air has been operating. So we're actually looking for, well, first off, many of the issues have been resolved, but the simplification of just having one airplane type operating on a Manistee, I think will basically seal that as being no longer an issue. As I said earlier, Cape Air has been serviced about two and a half years. The way the process works is every two years, US Department of Transportation goes out for bids. That last bidding cycle resulted in Cape Air's newest two-year contract that started October 1st of last year. So they will be our carrier for the next year plus. But in roughly a year from now, we'll be going through a new selection process that could result in a different carrier at that time. Switching away from air service to kind of capital improvements at the airport, we were blessed to receive about $300,000 in ARPA grants from the Manistee County as part of their ARPA funds. And that's allowed us to catch up on a lot of what I'll call deferred maintenance. Some of the more visible items are new carpeting throughout the terminal. One of our big hangar buildings, which has been an eyesore for a number of years, has recently been painted. The roof on that still needs its painting and that's scheduled for later this month. We're getting new security door, door security systems installed, card readers for all the doors and enhancing that system a little bit and then updating all of our automatic doors throughout the building. So these are all things that, you know, our terminal is now roughly 15 years old. So we're, we were starting to see increased costs on maintenance on a lot of these things that move and can wear out. And this, these dollars have helped us to kind of catch up on some of those things. On kind of a bigger, more airport perspective, we are finalizing our airport layout plan, which for airports is essentially our master plan. That needs to be done every 20 years. We're a little bit overdue on that. Our last update on that was 1999. And then that basically lays out our anticipated capital spend for runways, taxiways and all of the airfield for roughly the next 20 years. And right now, we're projecting needing to spend about $15 million over the next 10 years for various improvements. The biggest of those is a complete reconstruction of our main taxiway, which used to be the main runway. So back in the late 90s, the old runway became a taxiway and a new runway was built. Also that pavement now is about 45 or 50 years old and is basically failing. Just kind of a quick overview of our budget. Our operating budget is about $500,000 a year. And the revenues that support that come predominantly from fees we charge to the airline. Various rents and other fees account for slightly under quarter. And then the county's contribution makes up the difference. And that's for our operating budget. For our capital improvements, other than some of these one-time ARPA funds, our capital improvements are basically all funded through the FAA with a federal share of 95%, a local share of 2.5% and the state kicks in another 2.5%. Looking forward, we're continuing, and I didn't really have a slide on this, but you know, so commercial air service is one pillar. General aviation is the other pillar. So anytime you're driving by the airport and you're seeing jets and lots of airplanes out there, that's general aviation. And that last year was a banner year for the general aviation industry. There was a lot of pent-up demand post-COVID. We're seeing numbers that are about the same as last year. So continued very strong general aviation activity. And our forecast for this month and the rest of the fall is continuing to see that. We're continuing to see good demand from, on the commercial side. In fact, our numbers are trending ahead of last year's numbers, partly due to the fact that the operational issues that the airline experienced last year, they're not experiencing this year. Continuing to see improvements in Cape Air's on-time performance. I already talked about the pilot shortage and some of those issues being addressed. Our hangar occupancy, so people actually, you know, parking their airplanes at our airport and keeping them there. We're really at the highest level we've been at in about a decade. So that is good. In fact, if I could get some doors fixed, I could probably rent one more hangar. And then something that's really exciting to me is we've got interest, interest from a private party to actually build a private hangar on the airport. And that's the first time that's, we've got two private hangars right now. The last time one of those was built was over 25 years ago. So there's activity and growth happening and that's kind of exciting to see. And that is my report. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I guess one thing I would mention, I mean, if anytime anyone has questions, feel free to reach out to me. But I also want to remind you that city appoints a member to the Airport Authority Board. Currently that is George Becker. So he's kind of your liaison to the Airport Authority. So also feel free to reach out to him as well. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just 23rd, Safe Build is done with their contract with the city. Ed and I met with AGS. They're, we're going to be working with them to set up the process with our administrative services department. But just note that Safe Build will be, we've asked them to complete out their permits that they already issued to avoid the complication of transferring permits and having a new set of eyes on them. So I know I've been receiving calls from Jocelyn Cove, some of the other builders. So I'll correspond with them tomorrow as well. But just wanted council members to be aware if you receive questions.
Are they going to finish out the, the re-inspects too on the rentals that have, they've already re-inspected once that had issues?
I believe so. I'll confirm the rentals as well.
Okay. Was that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Any other staff?
I just wanted council to know that we put out to bid a rehab project for 8th Street yesterday. The project's going to be asphalt overlay from Tamarack Street down to 31 and then from Davis Street to Vine Street. It's a three-week bid and then we should be coming back to council on September 5th council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt.
I had a couple of things. Can we get an update on the curb replacement on Second Street? It looks like they took the curb out and now there's been like a line of cones for a while.
Yeah, there's a number of locations where, where we did that. We started prepping when we had time and then cone them off. Usually in mid-August, towards the end of August is when we start our sidewalk replacements. So what I like to do is, is do enough of those so we can do a full load and then we pour a number of those at one time and then we'll move on with our concrete or sidewalk upgrades. So I would expect it to be in the next few weeks.
So when we go around and do some of that, are we going to like continue to work on some of the potholes around town?
Potholes we routinely do. The crew has been working on crack ceiling for the past three weeks. We just finished that on Friday. So we're doing a couple of little catch-up things, but then we'll get back out on, on potholes as well.
What about the post office street? Like that's pretty bad still.
Yeah, the street itself is, has been patched numerous times this summer. The parking that is associated with the store has not been. And each time that we actually, we had conversations about it. It's in the right of way, but that was built by the store. So we're reaching out to the store to let them know that they need to do some improvements. We've sent the crew over, over there to do it and there's been cars there every time. So they've done what they've could around the cars that are parked there.
All right. One last question, I think that pertains to the DPW and then I have one other question. What about tree branches? Like so the trees that people plant in front of their homes, but it's city property? Who's responsible? Like personally, I would think that would be my responsibility as a homeowner. But what do we do when that's, the homeowners like neglecting that?
So you're talking about like between the sidewalk and the street itself?
Yeah, so I'll give you an example, like between Second and Third Street, there's like that row of cherry trees, you know, on your way to the courthouse. Well, some of those are like hanging over. I mean, you have to dodge the branches to get through. I mean, like the other day I saw one of the attorneys from Micah Myers walking to the courthouse. And you know, you got to walk up on the people's lawn because there's no way to get through that.
So each year, we have the plow crews go out in the fall, late fall. And they will travel the streets and they will trim for the, for the trucks so that the trucks, the plow trucks don't hit those and cause damage.
But this is on the sidewalks.
We also send guys that, that do the sidewalks and all plowing and, and they will trim out the corridors just enough to make sure we can get those via. But if you've got a certain specific location like that, we can, we can address it now.
I guess I'm wondering though, like in the future, could we look at that before we get to like our tourist season? Because Manistee is a pretty walkable community. And like this year, I mean, if you're traveling, I mean, if you're able to, I mean, it's probably easier to walk downtown than it is to get in your car and drive right now with some of the traffic. So I guess I'm just thinking like, maybe there's a way to do that like springtime even.
Well, usually when we do it in the fall, it, it takes some time during the summer for that growth to occur. So you know what I mean? So if we do it too early, then you're not going to get.
Right, I could be wrong, but I'm thinking that these trees must have gotten this then because there's been a lot of growth.
Okay.
So it was just like.
That's on Third Street, you said?
It's, it's the house on Maple, the big brick one that's.
I know what you're talking about.
Like, I mean.
Yep.
They're like hanging down almost to the sidewalk. Like you really have to walk around them, like you can't walk under.
When we trim those, they get very upset, but I know what you're talking about now.
Well, I get that, but people still should be able to.
Yep, yeah, we have to just.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The only other thing I had a question about, and I know this is kind of like an overrunning issue for us, seems like is people leaving their trash out? Like putting their big bulk items out super early? I mean, there's several houses that have mattresses and like, it's almost like piles. Like it's not one item. It's like, I drove by one house today, they had a mattress, they had, looked like an entertainment center, all this stuff. Like what are we doing about that? Because some of it seems like it's the same house each time. So I, I guess I feel like, I don't know.
If there's a specific address, if you could give it, we could, I think we can have Republic pick it up and bill them. So I just need to know, just send me the address and then you're right if it's.
One on Eighth Street.
This one's not on either one of those streets, but yeah. Okay, I can send you the address. Okay, I can send you the address.
Thank you.
Are we not using the app anymore?
I put it in the app, but I didn't hear anything back, so I didn't... I didn't know if I did it incorrectly.
We might have to advertise it a little bit more, like, monthly, or...
Yeah.
I thought we were sending them letters, Jeff, who quit putting it out to its garbage day. I thought that was brought up here a while back.
I don't recall Public Works sending out a letter for that. I think there was a suggestion. I know that we post it regularly on Facebook and online. I think there was a suggestion to put it in the tax newsletter.
About the bulk pickup? And we did look into costing for adding another that we sent to the NRC for bulk pickup, but we can look into that issue if it's a repeating homeowner that's doing a progress or...
I think it's rental, so I think that might be part of it, like, when people leave, but...
That's usually when the...
Yeah.
And when that happens, normally, somebody will call us. We'll try to contact the landlord. If we can't get it resolved, we will go out there in assisting with Republic to pick it up and then send them a bill.
Okay. All right.
Somebody just run up and down Cypress and cut that grass. I don't know if you send a letter out to people cutting the grass between the sidewalk and the road, but the weeds are growing up over there again.
Along the highway?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
You can just trim it down a little bit.
While you're up here.
You might as well just stay.
Sorry. Are we still picking up brush? I noticed...
Yes.
So, on my street or my block, there's been piles of brush for, like, three weeks straight, so we might have to educate again on calling, because now it's, like, the road, and we're having to...
Yeah, they're picking up when they see it. This past Friday, we had a very large branch that came down in the wind during the storm front during the night, so... And then, the rest of the tree was obviously dangerous and rotted, so they got out to... They didn't start till the afternoon, and then we continued yesterday. But yeah, when they're... When they're going out, they're... Like, we instituted last year, when they see it, they're supposed to be picking it up.
So, we are picking it up as we see it now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, we still want people to call in.
Right. I just didn't... We're maybe educate again, just keep posting every so often to call in your brush piles, because I see that they've been sitting for quite a long time, so...
I got a question while you're up here. Where are we with leasing that leaf vacuum thing for the fall?
We have... We have looked at the cost of doing them. They are extremely expensive, so what we've talked about internally before we take a major chunk out of our motor pool is to demonstrate a couple units, or at least a unit this fall, to see if there's enough value to justify the expenditure.
For just leasing it?
I didn't... There... I'm not aware of any lease options on them, but the purchase price is over $150,000, $140,000.
Okay.
How did that deal work out last year, when you just went down the street and spoke the teeth on it?
Yeah, those were... That's been our best method. We've had that for probably five years now, where we just pick it up with a claw attachment and then load... Bulk load the trucks. It doesn't leave as clean as some people would like behind it, and obviously, the last couple of years, we had early leaf fall, and... Which could happen again with the lack of rain and the stress that the trees have experienced. So, we've had some conversations about starting that a little bit earlier. I won't be able to give a full crew, because we won't have the bridge tenders back, but we plan on doing... Starting that a little bit earlier.
Kind of got away. Are we done on the side?
I just have one more question. Not for you, though.
Oh.
So, are we going to get a pool update or school update anytime soon? I know that there's a new director for the pool, or I don't remember.
Oh, regarding the pool, I can... Yeah.
I've just been hearing rumors about, like, when people run out to the school pool, they're not allowing to be using the warm pool now, and I know that they do therapy, but I just want to make sure that... Because, you know, taxpayers still use that warm pool, and I don't think it's right that they're saying that people can't use that pool. And I know that MRA uses it sometimes, and I want to make sure that it's open to the public and...
I'll reach out to them, ask them to come in and give an update as well to council.
Ms. Beaton.
I'm getting a few complaints about dogs running unleashed on the beaches, and I'm wondering if there is any way we can make sure that people need to put their dog on a leash, but there's some areas of the beach that they're really not allowed to walk at all. So, I'm looking for some help from staff on how you correct it? How do you make people stop doing that?
We can put some more things on social media about it, get education up to people have their dog on a leash. I think probably enforcement. I'm not sure, Chief, how often you go down there. Maybe we could stuff that up as well.
I think it's public education enforcement. We try to get her off as possible. We try to get them down there and out onto the beach as much as possible, so I think those two things. There is an area of the beach where the dogs are allowed, from my understanding, but I don't think it's a problem that we're having. Remember, a problem in public beach is what it sounds like, so...
Are there posted signs on the beach in Person's history? Is there posted, no dogs on there?
So...
Somebody suggested we say unleash dogs subject to a $100, $200 fine.
There is an ordinance, and so, again, it's Public Education Enforcement balancing act there, so we'll make sure we're down there often.
Don't go where you're... Yeah, don't go too far.
Anything else? Yes.
I just... We had a citizen complaint from a city employee about Blake. Have we done anything with that? Have we followed up on that?
Yeah, we've addressed the next day from the police department, and I believe our zoning person is also addressing the zoning aspect of that.
We're getting results from that?
We are, but it's a back... It's been a back-and-forth issue for years, so it's just a matter of continuing enforcement, and when there's a violation, we take enforcement action. But again, this has been going back and forth. They cleaned it up, and we cite them, and then it's been going on for years, so we're going to continue our efforts.
Okay. I thought we had to... That happened last week. Thank you very much.
Well, true, as I had a citizen complain about the music at Smoke on Water being at 11:20 PM. I don't know if we put a deadline on the music for that event?
I understand it was 11:30 was the deadline.
Was it?
Our sergeant... So, the main act was late in arrival, and so our sergeant had to talk to the event people, say, hey, this thing's authorized until 11:30, I believe it was, and so my understanding is that's when the music cut off, but...
Someone complained at 11:18, they're calling, sending emails, so 11:30 is the number, that's good. There was quite a bit of trash on the beach the next day between the period. I don't know if they're required to walk that after they can get done and clean up their junk from there. I mean, I think we should put that in a revision next year, that the DPW shouldn't have to do that. This would be a nice...
Yeah. And we were very fortunate, you know, like, the TJ's Block Party, Lindsay did an excellent job cleaning up, so I think we'd like to put the onus on them to clean up and not put that on our DPW workers, so...
They did... I know that they contacted Chief Glass, and they contacted myself to see if there were any complaints or any issues or anything that they needed to do, kind of a debrief, you know, on Monday, so we'll certainly pass that along.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.